Good evening. It is six o'clock on March 27th. I'm listening for an echo, but I don't think I hear one. And I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting to order unless I see an objection. Seeing none. This meeting is called to order. I don't know who is Ginger in the IT room. So Joe, are you there? Okay, Joe's here. Okay. Thank you. All right, Councilman Secunder is joining us from home. And so if I could have Councilman Hinnigan, please lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
Please stand if you're able. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, a wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief, you're here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to introduce three of the newest members of the Dunwoody Police Department tonight. All right. We're excited to have them. If you, for right now, if y'all want to just stand here and face the mayor and council, that's okay.
They're changing the rules on you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll get that afterwards. We'll do that. But I want to introduce the, the three newest members of our department. The first is Justin Davis. Justin is joining us from the Smyrna Police Department where he served several years as a police officer there. He is a graduate of the University of North Georgia with a Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice, and he joined our department on March 13th, so we're glad to have him. Then we have Jonah Amos. Jonah joined us from the DeKalb Police Department where he served for several years as well and had a good career there, and we're happy he moved over here to the Dunwoody Police Department. He also was self-employed for a time as a personal fitness industry expert. So we're, we sure we can put that to use here. So welcome to Jonah. And then lastly, we have Adam Gallup. Adam is also joining us from the DeKalb Police Department where he was employed as a police officer since 2019. Before that, he served as a service technician with Spencer Heat and Air. And we're excited to have Adam on our team as well. We think all these three officers are going to make excellent members of the Dunwoody Police Department. Now y'all can move in those spaces.
On my honor, I beg your solemnly swear and affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
I solemnly swear and affirm that I and the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Georgia and the Charter and Formations of the City of Dunwoody.
The Constitution of the State of Georgia and the Charter and Formations of the City of Dunwoody, Georgia.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due to the state or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due to the state or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state or any foreign state by the laws of the State of Georgia prohibited from holding.
I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the State of Georgia. Under any other state, I am not the holder of any office of trust under the State of Georgia.
May otherwise qualified withhold the office of a peace officer according to the Constitution or laws of the State of Georgia. Will faithfully follow the legal rules, regulations, policies, and procedures that the Dunwoody Police Department and the City of Dunwoody, Georgia.
I will faithfully follow the legal rules, regulations, policies, and procedures in accordance with the law of the State of Dunwoody, Georgia.
Congratulations.
It's a production a little bit. Okay. First, speaking on behalf of myself and our council, I am very grateful that y'all have chosen Dunwoody to be your law enforcement home. We are a great community and we are so proud that you are joining our family. Some of the young people over there who can raise their hand, the students from Dunwoody High School, to many of our residents that are here tonight and watching at home, and in general, we are thrilled to see you here. You have to let us know if there's anything we can do for you, myself, our council, our city manager, obviously Chief Grogan, and the rest of your leadership, and to all our wonderful Dunwoody Police Officers and department members behind you. We are also very grateful that you serve our city so well. We are always the recipient of great positive feedback for the services you all provide, and we are so glad that you are the newest additions to our department. So welcome to Dunwoody. Again, don't hesitate to reach out if you need anything, and once again, congratulations. And thank you to your families for sharing you with us. Thank you. All right, it is time for public comments. Noel Ross, if you'll just approach the microphone and you will have three minutes.
Madam Mayor, City Council, and Dunwoody community at large. I'm Noel Ross, and I'm the Executive Director of Dunwoody Preservation Trust. I'm here today, as I was a few weeks ago, I told you all about DPT's future for 2023 and beyond, and our hopes to open up a museum. On the agenda tonight is Vermont Park, and part of that plan is to tear down the brick house on the property. We are right around the corner from Vermont Park at Donaldson Fannister Farm. And we are a nonprofit, small, without the means to buy or to build a museum. A museum would bring culture, tourism, and community to Dunwoody. Please do not stunt our ability to do that and instead consider partnering with us. Do not tear down this brick home that could be a home to a museum for Dunwoody and partner together with us to build something great with something that we already have. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny Ross.
I'm Danny Ross. Bet 165 North Peachtree Road. I bet you're not, I don't know what I'm going to talk about, but it might be following the Noel. Back in 2005, one of our homes was about to be torn down here. My wife and I were co-presidents of the Dunwoody Preservation Trust at the time. And we found out about this, that we're going to make cluster homes out of this home. And I went to the owner of the house and said, listen, we'd like to save that house. It's the second oldest house in Dunwoody. And David Chestnut agreed to give us an option to buy it. We had no money, but we said, just give us an option for a year to raise that money. We were able to raise the money, $1.2 million to build that through green space that the county had and working with Vernon Jones, which was no small feat on our part. When we became a city, that property became Dunwoody's property for $5,300, $500, $100 an acre, and $5,000 for the piece of land. Today, we have an opportunity to save another piece of property to build something here that I think could be equally important to our community in attracting tourism. And I ask you today to please not tear down that so that we'll have a home for our museum. We've hired a, a person to run the museum. There are museums in the area that are used, houses like this. I visited one in Sea Island, and I also visited one in Annapolis, Maryland, and their homes, they are, no, no, to the council, just the council. But I, I, these two homes that you're getting pictures of here are homes that were in the, in the area. One of them is a farmhouse, and the other one is on Maritime Museum in Sea Island, Georgia. And it's a home that was converted into a museum. This also can be converted into a museum, and is very, very close to where we already have our operations. Thank you.
Thank you. That, or the only cards I have for public comment, we'll have another public comment section at the end of the meeting if anyone wants to speak. And, hold on, I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of technical difficulty. We were supposed to have a proclamation for the National Candy Month, but our honoree is still under the weather, and so we will reschedule when she's available. And now, Mr. Berry and Jennifer Betcher, I don't know who's. Right, just form a line. This, to everyone, is the Dunwoody High School Youth City Council.
Good evening, and thank you guys for having us tonight. Youth City Council is a, I'm a club that's offered to Dunwoody High School, and it's a way to connect the city government with the school. So we get a variety of guest speakers throughout the year. This year, we've had Mayor Deutsch, we've had various council members, Councilmember Hinnigan, Lotton Buckland Price come and speak with the students. We had Chief Krogan come and speak. We had community development, economic development, and Parks and Rec come and speak as well. So it's a good way to inform the students about what the city does, what the city government does, how the city government works, because that's really not in our, you know, curriculum that we have in our associate courses is, you know, a great deal of information on local government. So I think it's been a successful program and informing the students on the way that the decisions made here impact their lives. And I think, long term, we're hopefully motivating students to, to be excited about public service one day, potentially, you know, becoming active members of their own communities when they, you know, become adults and move into wherever they live permanently. So really, we would like to thank you all for all the effort that you guys have, have put into our club and the time you guys have dedicated, and a special thank you to Jennifer Betcher, who has gone above and beyond making our program successful and really dynamic for the students. She makes a Kahoot presentation for each of the, the speakers each time. She lines up her speakers. She brings prizes for the students who win the Kahoots. So really, more anything, I know that we're here to be recognized by you guys, but we're also here to thank you guys for everything that you've done for, for our program at school.
Thank you. I believe we're going to take a photo, Council, if y'all can go down and join. And we want to thank y'all. You teach us and educate us. With every meeting we attend with you, we learn something. All right, next is the
Move to approve.
I'd, I'd like to request that. One second, okay. No, just to request, I'd just like to request that item number six be removed from consent and moved to business.
Active motion on the floor, so. Can, can we have a friendly amendment?
It is, yes.
All right, so now it's been a friendly amendment, sorry, you are right off the bat. And so the motion on the floor is the consent agenda to be approved with the exception of number six being moved to business item. So it will become the new number 10, I guess, or the new number, it's 10 or nine. Oh, I guess we can keep it six and do it first. That's a good idea. So it stays six, but it becomes the first business item. Does anybody have any questions on the remaining two items? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Joe, can you just raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye, okay. It's unanimous. Thank you. The consent agenda passes unanimously. All right. Sharon has to read, or Jessica needs to read the new.
Item number six is resolution for new opioid settlement.
Mr. Bernard.
Madam Mayor and Council, so I'm gonna give a little bit of background about this. As y'all know, before I got here, I think y'all hired outside counsel to do the opioid litigation nationwide. That firm is on y'all's behalf entering into certain matters related to the resolving of certain opioid cases. So when it came to Eric, what I suggested to Eric to do, they're going to, all of it's going to be DocuSign. All of it's going to be set up by the, the settlement administrator, so the forms are all the same. There's not anything to negotiate. Either you're in or you're out. If you're out, you're not getting any money. It's as simple as that. If you're in, you will get a portion of your money based on some calculation where the settlement administrator, the federal court in multi-district litigation, and the, the council that oversees all the multi-district litigation for the various plaintiffs has agreed to criteria for how that money gets allocated. So first, the first criteria is you have to have a certain number of local governments participate. They're at it. You have to have the state join it. The state of Georgia has joined it. What will happen is the state of Georgia will get a, 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 a sum of money out of the allocation that it can redistribute through grant programs in various regions throughout the state. And each subdivision or city, counties, the like governments that are participating will be allocated in accordance with that formula. So there is no specific number. I will tell you due to the size of Dunwoody, even taking into calculations, the sum's probably not going to be great. It will be paid over five to seven years, and in some cases up to 18 years, depending upon the settlement. I know it not from y'all's, but I'm handling it for somebody else in another situation. So what came up was TVA, Walgreens, CVS, and Allergan are middle players in this opioid pandemic. They've reached a nationwide settlement. You have a deadline of April the 18th, I think, to submit all the forms. When it came up, I reached out about three weeks ago when I determined who the council was and said, look, give us guidance of where we are, because I didn't know until that point. They said that they need to get that approved, and y'all need a designated representative, which is consistent with the other handlings I've had. So I suggested to Eric, Eric, you can't just simply sign this. It needs to be on the record that, one, the council is agreeing to participate in the various nationwide settlements, and there'll be a series of them, and that somebody is designated the agent, and I suggest it be your city manager, because everything's DocuSign, subject to our final legal review, and we'll look at whatever comes up the pipeline. So when this came up, I thought it was going to be just a business item, but you do need to take action on it because the deadline is right around the corner, and there's certain things that we need to get in place. And candidly, the communication's been a little bit off, probably because of change in my position, but we're making up the time. We recommend that you participate as other governments have participated. They've met all the thresholds, and you'll get a direct payment over a period of time. You'll also, you'll also be eligible in your region for specific block grant and programming to deal with opioids. The money will be restricted for, when it comes in, and y'all already know that. It's got to be used for certain criteria, and we can get richer, but it's to deal with the pandemic, not just in general funds that can go to just any and everything. So what I would suggest, Madam Mayor, rather than approve a resolution that they sent us at the last minute, I would suggest that y'all designate the city manager as y'all's with authority to entertain and enter into these nationwide settlements, subject to legal review. It's got to be recommended by our council that y'all already have, and I will look at it. And if I see something that's crazy, we'll bring it to y'all's attention. Otherwise, Eric would be designated with authority to both enter into the participation agreements, which are forms, and would also be with authority to receive information, because somebody's got to be designated on these forms. Again, it's not an individual negotiation with the city. It's a nationwide and a block group that have come together with criteria. The forms, the settlement administrator are sending to y'all. They're the same form for every city. These weren't filled out because I didn't realize it was going to be on consent. I apologize, but that's the way we got them. But it's not like anything can be maneuvered on. You're going to get whatever your participation value is in the group. If you don't participate, you're going to be tied up in district court, probably with expenses that will exceed the value you'll ever receive, candidly. So we're asking, we, we would ask you, rather than approve a, a resolution, that, that you consider a motion to give the city manager authority to enter into these nationwide settlements, subject to legal approval, and agree that the city manager will be designated as your agent, because everything's being done electronically. There's not, that's probably why the paperwork's not completed, because it's going to end up getting entered into a system anyway. But we'll make sure it's right before it goes on, and whenever he does execute, the, the city clerk will get a copy so that the city has an archives of what exactly transpired.
Okay, I'm Tom.
Yes, Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to have settlement authority with respect to all national opioid settlements and be designated the city's point of contact with signature authority on all related documents subject to
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so now we can have discussion. So before we discuss, for the public's interest, I want people to understand how small amount of money we're expecting. So the states get, correct me if I'm wrong, but the states get the bulk of the money. The counties get more of the money than the cities do, unless you're a big city that's like the size of the county, I guess, like Atlanta. And then the cities get a minute, relatively speaking, amount.
So that's true. I would say that the fraction of input is less than 1% for the city, just based on what I've seen. I've seen the map for the whole state.
Right.
And a county that's about 150,000, their fraction was like 1.7.
Oh, we weren't
This is a metropolitan county, so I would think that y'all's would be under the 1% threshold.
You're saying 1.7%, not 1.7 million, right?
No, 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 no. 1.7% of the whole of the fractional share that the state is getting.
Right.
Yeah.
Because we heard the amount a while ago, just a passing amount, and it was, I'm not sure it would cover dog food for our drug dogs for a year, so.
I'd love to be able to say I know the amount, and it's going to be, it's put into a computer and generated. My guess is, is probably very close annually to the city manager's spend authority, but I don't want to go on record saying that because I don't know.
That's a lot, no, that's a lot more than we heard. We heard $12,000.
That's what I'm saying. I say it's less.
Oh, less than, okay, not, not, okay, I misunderstood. Okay, does anybody have any other questions? Everybody okay with the strategy? Oh, Joe, sorry, go ahead, Joe.
Ken, so where is?
Wait, wait one second, because we can't hear you. We can barely hear. Maybe you speak up and in the back, if y'all can do some magic.
Hold on. You can barely hear me?
Yes, barely hear.
Wait a minute. Let me
Can you hear me better now?
Yes, but still speak loud.
Okay, Ken, what is the difference with this contract that we approved a couple of years ago? What does this impact have?
Well, I'm not sure what contract y'all approved a couple of years ago, but what I would say is this. The lawyer's fees are being handled separately. They don't come out of your share. You get a direct check. The state gets a direct check. The lawyers have to apply for their fees, and they're in a kiddy with all the other lawyers. And it's a trickle-down effect where the committee that's overseeing the multi-district litigation, that group's going to take a little bit off the top, then all the other lawyers are going to get a little bit. So it probably, depending upon the size of the government, works out to a very small amount, and the bigger governments obviously be a larger amount.
The contract we approved a few years ago was to proceed. It was to be part of the class. That's what we approved a few years ago, was to participate in the class. Go ahead, Joe.
So, so there was no staff memo to read on this, to do some background and events of it. I appreciate pulling this out as a discussion. So back to what Lynn, you just said, what did we sign last time? What is the impact of, of this document? Are they mutually exclusive?
One was, will you mute when I talk? Because otherwise it echoes. Do you mind? Sorry. One was to proceed as part of the class. Just raise our hand and say, yes, that's what we approved a few years ago. Now this is to approve the settlement from the class. So they're two separate, they're related, because one was the class and one, this is the settlement, but they are separate. And we talked about the settlement itself a few, like last year, no, two, before, like in 2021, I think. And then it just takes a long time. Classes take a long time, but that's the difference. One was to be part of the class, and this is to accept the settlement. You have to, if you're talking, so.
Joe, I think I could add one. I could add one thing, I think. It, it's possible that this is coming up again because it's a different set of defendants. Remember, there was an early settlement prob, I'm guessing, if y'all have received any money, it was from the
We haven't received any money.
There, there's also a number of bankruptcies pending related to this, which is going to drag on for a lot of years. So I'm not sure what you signed before, but this should not hurt it, because your council in Alabama is aware of where is aware of wherever y'all are and supposed to be handling this.
It really was to prove being part of the class, so.
Um, can you hear me better now? I flipped my mic. Just curious.
You're worse than you were with your mic.
Oh, right. So anyway, um, Ken, I'd, I'd like to get the background though, what you just said, you're not sure what we signed last time. I know Lynn, you stated that, just, just to have due diligence, Ken, and please look at. I'd like if there's a part of this process to review that. Uh, prior contract we signed a couple of years ago and make sure they're uh not, not competing against one another.
Yeah, I don't think it is, Joe. Let me tell you why, because you, I'm not representing y'all on opioids. Somebody else is. And they're the ones that sent these documents to Eric and said, y'all need to get this approved. Before the April timeframe because you're on the list as not having approved them. So your council, the Dunwoody council on opioids is the one, the lawyer that sent the documents to Eric saying, y'all need to get these blessed because y'all are behind as far as the deadline coming up. So I don't feel like there's any, there's no problem.
It's the same attorney, if that helps you. It's that, remember the attorneys from Alabama? Do you remember, Joe? The attorneys from Alabama? Yeah, that's who it is.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
All right, so there's a motion on the table. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question and Joe, you can raise your hand one way. Are there all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you all for working through that with us. Deputy Chief Carlson, oh, that's not me. Sorry, y'all. Sorry.
The next item is item number seven, approval of update to De, to DeKalb County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Deputy Chief Carlson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A couple of weeks ago, I came uh to you in regards to the adoption of this hazard mitigation plan and you all had a lot of questions. Uh, we reached out to Chief Cox, uh, who has um shown up here today and I would like to bring him up to the podium for any questions you may have. Prior to turning it over to him, do you have any questions for me?
Does anybody have any questions for Deputy Chief? Go ahead, John.
Uh, Deputy Chief, uh, we raised questions regarding the document. The document seemed to be incomplete, inaccurate, missing lots of data, dates, names. It was basically a skeleton report. Can you give us an update as to what's in front of us tonight? What's changed? Or would you like the?
Yeah, Chief Cox will be able to explain that.
Great, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, Council, thank you for the invitation to come.
Thank you.
To answer your question, Mr. Council, we consulted with our vendor, Bold Planning, which is our contracted vendor to assist us in the design development. And the implementation of this jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. And I'll read the statement that they sent uh in accordance with FEMA guidelines. The plan has some dates that must be added to match the final approval letter date when issued by FEMA. Which cannot be attained until all participating jurisdictions have provided proof of plan adoption to GMA and FEMA. The plan is approved pending adoption by the Federal Emergency Management Agency in its current state. And upon receipt of the jurisdiction adoption resolutions, which are thirteen in the whole. They will send us the final approval letter. Once we have final approval, we will fill in the dates, remove any other markups or comments from the document. Add copies of adoption resolutions and a copy of the final approval letter. And then submit the completed copy of the plan to DeKalb Emergency Management Office. Georgia Emergency Management Agency and Federal Emergency Management Agency. The plan before you for your consideration of approval in its present form has been approved by FEMA. It's been reviewed and approved by GMA. The DeKalb County Government Authority has approved that plan as well as six of the twelve remaining city jurisdictions has approved in the current form that you have.
All right, thank you. Could you do me a favor and do us a favor? Give us a three minute overview of emergency management and what you do and how you would work with the city of Dunwoody? Cause I've looked at plans in the past and I haven't seen coordination efforts between uh uh, DeKalb, you know, emergency management and the city of Dunwoody. Could you just give us some overview on what would happen in the case of an emergency here in Dunwoody?
Ken, thank you for your question. Uh, the goal of the Cab County Emergency Management Office is to exist to serve the citizens of the county. For planning, response and mitig, mitigation of natural and manmade disasters. Of course, we are in a constant state of improvement. And we are currently, as we've met with your city manager, Eric Linton, we appreciate the wonderful relationship that we continue to have when I was prior to the county fire marshal. And now the Director of Emergency Management Chief Grogan, uh, Chief Carlson, as well as your planning staff. We continue that relationship, but we are currently meeting with each and every city jurisdiction to improve and enhance that relationship. Certainly it, 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 we, we are, we are in dire times. They're strange times and it's a whole lot better to have those relationships and those bridges built on the blue sky days that we're enjoying, rather than waiting till there's one of those dark gray sky days. We've just went through the pandemic of the century. And certainly unprecedented times. My appointment nomination by the CEO of DeKalb County as well as the appointment by the governor and the Director of Emergency Management of Georgia occurred a month after. The, the, the cat, the, the cap county as well as Dunwoody and other cities declared of a state of emergency, much less the, the national state of emergency. I was appointed as interim and of course anytime you, you undertake a, an appointment such as that. Uh, there was, we are in a constant state of improvement and we are well on the way to enhance and improve those types of relationships, communications. As well as what you have before you, this three hundred and ninety-four page document. A tremendous amount of work. We're very proud of this document because we put it together and worked with thirteen other jurisdictions. It's tough to work with one jurisdiction and the departments that's representative. But we've worked together. We feel like this document is a, has been a success because of that collaboration communication. Not only with the city of Dunwoody, but all the jurisdictions of, of DeKalb County.
Well, thank you. Continuous improvement and uh having those conversations during sunny days is always a good thing. I guess there's a local emergency planning commission or commit, planning committee, LEPC that DeKalb is part of and those meet on every once in a while. Do you have this, that, do you have an active LEPC?
So part of this, the, the planning committee that was placed together to bring the copy of the multi jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. It was brought together. The FEMA and GMA requires this process to take place every five years. So what you have as approved by FEMA will is effective to, to February the sixth of two thousand twenty-eight. We're also getting ready to come on the cycle of the DeKalb County Emergency Operations Plan. The last time it was updated and adopted by the respective cities as well as unincorporated, the cab was two thousand and eighteen. So we're bringing basically the same committee members.
Okay.
Into that and part of that all planning committee, you mentioned the local emergency planning committee. The Cab County's local emergency planning committee has, has not been, been in effect since two thousand twelve.
Right.
Our efforts are through these plan updates and having the stakeholders and the representatives that we need at the table and improved communication. Uh, we're going to be bringing those people together to formulate that local emergency plan committee again, revive it and begin to really begin doing some in-depth studies of, of the hazards of DeKalb County as well as the hazard mitigation plan and the emergency operations plan.
That's great. Thank you. Final question, if I could, I raised an issue regarding the Scott Canler Water Treatment Facility and the dams that were level one dams that need to be inspected on a regular basis and an emergency uh safety plan that was published whereby the city of Dunwoody really wasn't part of that emergency plan. Um, it's my belief that the dam needs to be inspected in the next couple of months. I believe that's in process. Uh, based on the documentation from your office or others, as well as a update of that emergency dam safety plan. Can you give me a little update of what's happening there? I'm guessing you're well aware.
Two thousand sixteen, the state of Georgia adopted the safe dams law. Of course, it's under the, the authority of the Environmental Protection Division, E P D. Part of that was that after an inventory of all the category one dams in DeKalb County jurisdiction. And by the way, a category one dam is classified as uh, as, as posing an imminent hazards to lives and property. Currently, there, there are eighteen of those category one dams in DeKalb County, including one of the dam that you are specified. Uh, to be permitted as a category one dam affected in two thousand sixteen. The dam owner had to develop an, an EAP, emergency action plan, as you referenced. Those plans were submitted to the Safe Dams Division of E P D. And by law, the, the cab, the local emergency management office is responsible not to approve the plans. But to act as the custodian of the plans. We are the gatekeeper of those plans. Part of that requirement of not only having the initial emergency action plan is that there has to be as requirement of the dam owner and the engineered wrecker. There has to be a periodic uh, periodic review and update to that plan. We are in that year for that update and thank you for your question. Uh, where we are, are we at with the dam that you category one dam you've spoken of that's owned by the DeKalb County Watershed? Uh, the Director of Watershed, I've spoken with him. We are current coordinating with Chief Grogan. As well as the other jurisdictions and stakeholders uh to develop a, a review board. And to begin to go over that plan and include those. Unfortunately, Dunwoody was left out of that plan. Outside of my administration, I can assure the mayor and this council. You guys will be first and foremost, and the recommendations that Major Fladrich uh, recommended to me have already been documented. And will be, have already been discussed with Director of Water Management and will be having that review meeting as well as other dams. That may be a, may impact the city of Dunwoody uh in the very near future.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate the comprehensive answers.
Absolutely.
Uh, Tom.
Oh yeah, thank you, Chief Cox. And again, just a piggyback on John's uh last question there, in, in the point that you made, doing this on blue sky days is important. I mean, we take, sometimes take for granny, for granted uh that everything's safe and everything, but having an effective plan is important. I mean, just today Spalding County had to evacuate neighborhoods because of a, a dam breached because of the weather events of last night. So having that plan is critical. Um, I have one question on the plan. It's a big old document, but you go all the way back to appendix D. Um, which is the hazard risk analysis. They talk about essential facilities and there's five essential facilities, E O C, care, fire, police and schools.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and it's done by jurisdiction. And when you go to the city of Dunwoody.
Uh-huh.
It accounts for three fire departments and seven schools. It does not account for police. So I'm just curious, was that an oversight or is there a reason why there's no police facilities accounted for? We do have a police department here, so. Is there something I'm not aware of or is that just something that needs to be fixed?
It definitely needs to be fixed. Police, the, the, the infrastructure part of the city of Dunwoody would include those police departments. Or precincts, more than one station. So that's something that we definitely need to, need to add to that appendix. Uh, or that critical infrastructure evaluation.
Okay, now how do we, how do we get that added or amended before we, as a part of the approval of the, of the plan? Uh, is there a process or procedure for doing that?
No, no, absolutely not. Uh, the process that I have before you is for the adoption of the plan. We can amend that plan. Or there may be other strategies that we've already talked to the city manager about to add those different amendments that you guys would have. If it's a strategy, if it's add an extra infrastructure, we'll definitely make that a priority to add to the plan.
Okay, yeah, and just for the record, it's page three fifty-three.
And thank you for that. Really, that's a great, great point.
Um, anybody else? So I appreciate this presentation a lot. I look forward to learning more about the specifics related to the waterworks facility here. Um, there are like some odds and ends that need tidying up, like you have an elementary school that's really an elementary school now that's four, five. How do we go about fixing that? I mean, should we just have um Deputy Chief Carlson send you an email with the stuff that needs to be tidied? Um, what's, how should that work?
So, so the, the beauty of the process that's before us.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the intent is upon adoption, it starts the new cycle. And the intent of the hazard mitigation plan at inside the FEMA guidelines is that the multi jurisdictional committee, as we meant to develop the update, begins to meet periodically. So part of that, you will, as city manager Linton and I and Chief Grogan talk, you will have a systematic uh, constant person on that committee to be able to bring those items. For example, as already brought, that maybe the city of Dunwoody may be interested in, in having uh tornado sirens. Not to change the subject, I'm using that as an illustration. There are going to be items that, that can be amended. And we, when we receive it, we go to GMA, they place it into the document. It's a ve- very easy process because we're already talking to um, uh, the city manager about adding that particular strategy inside. So as you mentioned, the infrastructure issue, whether it's a new strategy. Those types of issues are, need to be because we're looking at the strategies that the Dunwoody has listed. Those strategies can be, can be updated or you can add strategies. That way when we get five years down the road, we're not saying hazard mitigation, what? We've actually got a committee that's been working on this plan. It's a living document that we can add to or take away as things need to be addressed.
Okay, I'm not totally sure that, so in cases where there's infrastructure listed incorrectly.
Right.
Do you want that correction through our city manager now or you're going to adopt the plan with the incorrect information in it? And then we'll correct it in the next five year plan? I'm trying to understand.
The, the plan, we're recommending the plan to be adopted at this.
Okay.
And then the recommendation to add the missed infrastructure of the police department and we will make note of that and take it to the Georgia Emergency Management. And, and add that to the plan.
All right, so this just happens to be one that really stood out to me under the senior care and living facilities. It says DeKalb County has an extensive systems of programs and services for its senior sixty-five plus population. This includes seven nursing homes, senior centers and senior housing facilities, all of which are considered vulnerable to the impacts from disasters. Are you not counting like assistant living in that seven nursing homes, even though their populations generally are pretty impacted? It, it, it just seems like a very specific number. There are seven nursing homes. And so I'm just wondering if somewhere in this three hundred and eighty-four pages or ninety-four pages, there's a list of these facilities. Um, that um, there's a list of these facilities that um, that don't correspond to reality.
Mm-hmm.
It, I just don't know. I mean, because I would assume that you have to be as prepared for a personal care home or assistant living as you do at the um, rest of it, like a nursing home. Okay, good. Okay.
So, so those types of items of concern, if you can address them to the city manager and we can speak with our, our bold planning, our vendor. And they're the ones that help assist us with the research for that. And if something that we can add to the plan for specifics, we will definitely can do that, Miss, Madam Mayor.
All right, so is anybody else have any other questions? John?
Sounds like we can approve with proper edits within our city jurisdiction in the next sixty days, so would that be amenable? Does that sound correct?
Sure. All the city jurisdictions when FEMA approved is listed as APA, approved pending adoption. So once the city has adopted, your status moves to approved. And immediately upon that approval, we can begin adding the amendments that we need to your document as you requested.
So I think what you're saying is, is we should approve it and then send you the information. Is that what we're hearing? The amendments or do you want the amendments first?
I would, my recommendation would be to approve and we would immediately begin to address the amendments that need to be placed within the document.
Eric, do you concur with that? Okay, all right. Any further, Tom? Go ahead.
Nope.
Any further questions?
I was, I was just going to move to approve.
Okay, so Tom moved to approve.
Second.
Second by Joe. Thank you, Joe. Uh, Joe, did you have any questions? Cause I forgot to look.
No questions. I appreciate the uh moving target and I appreciate the flexibility of getting this move forward. Thank you.
Um, okay, and we will, Eric, we will counsel when you, if you have feedback, Eric, y'all will review and we'll give you all those amendments. Or any amendments that are needed, anybody. Okay, with that, um, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Joe, you can raise your hand. You know, that passes unanimously. Jessica, thank you. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Item number eight is approval of the park master plan for forty-eight oh nine and forty-eight nineteen Vermac Road, Brentwater.
Evening, Mayor and Council. As you all know, we met on February thirteenth and discussed the parks master plan for Vermac Road. Um, I took those, uh, documents back or that conversation back to our design team with Pond. They made numerous modifications to the plan set. It's in your package. I'm trying to pull it up here. I can. One second. Walk through those with you guys. Okay. Should be on your screen. Hopefully y'all can see that. So in that discussion that we had on the thirteenth, there were several items that, uh, Councilman Price and Councilman Seconder brought up. Uh, for us to take back to the design team. Um, so I'll kind of walk through those just to make sure that we captured them all. Uh, hopefully we have. Uh, we are requesting this plan to be adopted this evening. Uh, first off, we did remove the, uh, crossing at the dead end. You can see the cursor at this location on the piece of property. Uh, we've removed that from the plan. Secondly, we removed the trail connection to the dead end, which was shown from here to the dead end that has now been removed also. Um, there was a question to our request to add additional fencing vegetated buffer. Uh, they highlighted additional vegetated buffer in the plan and then also made a note. That the entire periphery of the park would be fenced. Uh, there's actually. Um, fencing pretty much around the entire property, but along Vermac and we would concentrate at in the construction documents, we would make sure to have adequate fencing. Uh, certainly in that play area, sports field, if it needed netting or additional fencing in that area, we would provide it. There's a note in the plan set now that cameras will be installed as needed, which was also a request. Um, the cover parking structure was removed. And also the solar panel array that was there, uh, those were placed, the solar panels were replaced on the pavilion roof and on the. A white farmhouse, um, operations office. Uh, we discussed putting them on the bathroom. But the bathroom facility actually had a smaller roof in the plan set, so we moved it to the pavilion roof so we could provide more, uh, solar panel. Of course, when we get into construction documents, we can flush that out even more. Um, there was a concern about the stormwater, so we made a note. Uh, to show that we will be following, uh, state guidelines for any stormwater control from the site. Um, there was a sensory garden request, so we added that here in this open area. Uh, just below the White House, so that's been added to the plan. There was a request to extend the soft surface trail out to the sidewalk, which is shown here and here. Um, the, uh, traffic calming on Vermac is shown as a red line and also in the legend, and there's also a note. Uh, that the public works department will will be designing traffic calming measures in this corridor in front of the park. Um, and then the, uh, note about the house, uh, we did have the note stating that once a adequate. Maintenance facility was added at Brook Run, that the operation staff wouldn't move there and then the White House would be available for community use. So I I think we got it all. Please let me know if I missed anything. And with that, I'll open it up. Any questions on the end?
Thank you. Thanks, everyone who spent hours and hours and hours and months and months and months of time on this. All right, questions? Um, anybody? John, thank you.
Um, yeah, happy to raise a couple of questions. I guess the first regarding the brick house. Tell me what status is it in? I know that plans are for the removal. We've had citizen, uh, concern or comment that it should be reserved and saved. What what level of, you know, where is it and what what's the, give us some background on that.
Okay, so the house sits, if you can see the cursor is kind of in this area of the property. Um, you know, the the design is based on. A lot of public input. Uh, these are the amenities that were kind of requested through that public input process. On site, through open forum, a line, uh, survey data, all of those things. The house that is there is a nineteen seventy-eight, uh, ranch. It structurally is fine. Um, I can't speak to what would need to be done to repurpose it. I'm not aware of the roofing structure or anything like that, so I can't say what it would take to modify that into a usable community space.
Right.
Um, but if we were to, um, change the plan and put that house back in. We would basically need to go back to, uh, design phase and. Start.
All right. So tell me then about the house that we are saving.
Um, it's an older home. I don't have an exact year. Uh, I believe it is the original farmhouse that was on the property. Uh, it's in decent shape. Uh, it's a roof, uh, the asphalt shingles that are on the roof are are past their life expectancy, but overall, it's.
So what it sounds like, it sounds like we are planning on tearing down the nineteen seventies nonhistoric house, but we are saving the historic house. We are using that house and making sure that the the water keeps running, the lights are on, the air conditioning, we're saving that house by using it. At some point in the future, there's plans to maybe do a maintenance facility and move the parks offices from that house. Over to, let's say, Brook Run or somewhere else. Basically, we're gonna find a way to move that function out of that house at that time. The older structure, which is more historic, would be able to be saved and used by some group going forward. If whatever the future council were to decide, three years from now or whatever the issue is, the timeline, does that sound?
That's correct.
That's correct. So in reality, we're saving the older house and we're not saving the one that was built in nineteen seventy. Because it's in a location where there's a lot more park amenities that are needed.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Tom?
Um, yeah, thank you, Brent, um, for everything you've done on this. This has been a a long process and I appreciate, um. Your work on this. I do have a question because there's a few things on here that. I didn't expect to see, uh, so hopefully you can clarify. Uh, the first is on the general notes. Item number three fence and heavily vegetated buffer proposed around the periphery of the park. When you s- when you speak about a fence around the periphery of the park, can you? Be more specific on that? Are we talking the entire property will be lined with a fence or where exactly will that fence be located?
Sure. So the. The entire periphery of the park is already pretty much fenced in, uh, with the neighbors', uh, property lines. They've all installed fencing. Um, so it's pretty much solid all around except for the edge along Vermac. So there was some concern. And some notes given to us during the open house at the park site. Uh, about kids playing on the field along Vermac and balls traveling into the road and to make sure that kids weren't running into the street or any of that. Um, opportunity. So primarily, we want to ensure that this edge is fenced, uh, where appropriate. Uh, of course, driveline, not so much along the woods, but, um. That's kind of where that comment came from initially, but there was also, uh, discussion about having. Uh, additional vegetated buffer along this edge for some of the neighbors to make sure that they had a blind to any park activity. So it's hard to show that in a plan set at this level. So we just made a note that. The the future of the park will have a fence around it. Um, if it's existing, that's what we'll stay. We're not talking about adding any additional fencing. Um, we will come in and plant, uh, necessary vegetation where it's needed. Um, but at this level, it's more of just a design note. Make sure that is included in the construction documents either as existing. Or new where needed.
Okay, so there's no plans to put a fence on the long narrow strip that goes behind homes?
That's correct.
Okay, um, on that same topic, you. I just want to clarify that there's existing cut through between Village Mill and Heritage Neighborhoods there at the dead end that neighbors use to go back and forth. Are we just not touching that or are we actually blocking, planning to block that off?
My understanding is that it was removed from the plan set because that was more of a function for public works later. Uh, to do a connection there, but it didn't necessarily need to live in the parks plan. I think there's still a plan to connect the two neighborhoods via a sidewalk at that dead end. But it was something that didn't need to be concluded as part of the parks master plan.
Okay, so there's no plans to block that off or prevent people from crossing through the neighborhoods? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that too because I wasn't a hundred percent sure. Um. Okay, uh, uh, thank you. I I I made my feelings clear on the trail connection at the last meeting, so I won't go through that again. Um, I feel it's inconsistent with our. City plans, um, and ignores the requests of a lot of the neighbors that want it, but, um, other than that, I'm I'm happy with the plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Stacy. Joe, sorry, thank you.
Can you, can you hear me? Okay. Got my mic on. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Can you? Yeah. Um, thanks again, Brent, for for all the work. We've had a lot of public meetings engagement with this. Uh, I don't even remember the very first time we presented this as a concept to the public, um, way last year and so on. Um, I do want to somewhat leverage about the use of the brick home as well. Um, yeah, we've had a lot of, lot of public comments and feedback and opportunities for people to provide suggestions. So I do respect the individuals that spoke today. Um, there are other opportunities for partnering, uh, in the city. For for potential use for for their their purposes. Um, but yeah, I I, the idea is that once we move the park operations. Into a future built facility on Brook Run, I think that would be awesome. Um, and I do think, you know, Brent, thanks for, I know we talked about the sidewalk and just to clarify what. Uh, Tom said, look, we want to prove this, uh, to add a footnote going forward. Another footnote to say number five is. Yes, in public works, there is a plan to connect this to make to make a pedestrian connectivity here between. Um, heritage and Old Village. In there, do we have any? We don't have that expressly written as a general note, do we, Brent?
Um, there, it just states that, uh, no, we don't have a note in there about the dead end connectivity. We just removed it.
Yeah. Well, I'll defer to, uh, the rest of the council and see what they think about that. If you want to add that as a general note to make sure that it. Doesn't slip through the cracks that it is in a, it is in a. City plan under public works for sidewalk, uh, neighborhood connectivity. I'll I'll leave it to everybody else's feedback on that thought, um, but I have no more further questions. Thank you all.
Hello, Vales. All right.
I I was just gonna kind of piggyback on your last comment, Joe, about, um, the connectivity between the two neighborhoods. Just for explanation, the thought is that that would actually be accomplished in the next year or two. Um, whereas this parks plan is a lot farther out, so because it was. Not going to be done as part of this plan, that's why it was pulled out and that's why I know it wasn't included. But there are plans to make that a all-weather pedestrian connectivity point between those two neighborhoods. Um, as I understand it at least. And then my other comment is this in general, um. I think this plan reflects a lot of community input and a lot of work on the part of the park staff and. Um, I I think that as it's gone through the iterations, it's gotten better and better. Uh, I know that there is some desire to keep that second house and there's always the. The, um, give and take of, you know, what can we do on the site and what can't we do on the site? Um, I do like that we're keeping the older house and I do like that we have plans to vacate that, to have it available for city or for other uses. Um, and I, and I think that we certainly could entertain, um, Dunwoody Preservation Trust if the square footage needs matched, the square footage of that house. To look at that as a potential use in the future. Uh, but anyway, that's all I've got for now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Stacy. So, I don't know, I would just like to see since, uh, at least four of us have said that. There's a plans for that connectivity, the way it shows in the map now, we took connectivity away and there's no footnote. So I just feel like if it actually is a plan, whether it's public works or parks, I think the connectivity should be reflected because right now there's trees blocking it. So if there's a plan to actually have connectivity, I think it should be reflected, whether it's a parks or public works project. I don't think it matters. Um, I want to read, allowed an email or received after our discussion at the, uh, two thirteen city council meeting. From a citizen, uh, Ms. Harris, I wanted to thank you for your comments during the two thirteen city council meeting. Regarding the connectivity between Heritage Mill, uh, between Heritage and Village Mill and Vermac Park via the connection trail. I attended the public input session on two twelve ten with my family and was incredibly excited about the access to this amenity. Without this access, the walking distance to this park will increase from point two, point two five mile to one mile and require walking along Vermac Road. I watched previously discussions with growing frustration on the salacious and outlandish concerns with the park and this connection. I'm disappointed that it looks, appears that it will be removed. I also want to, um, go back to, uh, uh, during public comment, uh, Ken Ashley, when, uh, regarding the Waterford, um, Plan Pass. Quote, opening access to parks is a great thing. End quote. Um, I would also like to point out to council that when we were up in Canton Canton last week and we were looking at the parks and. Most of our questions were based on how are they connecting their parks via trails into neighborhoods? And in fact, with this plan, we are doing the exact opposite. We are removing connectivity. Connectivity is in all of our plans. It is all we talk about and how we would connect our city via different ways. And with this plan, uh, we are doing the exact opposite and I'm I'm disappointed to see it removed.
Okay. Um, when we're talking about the fencing for the park. Where the ball fields are, or not, it's not a ball field where they might be throwing a ball or, uh, playing. You're talking about decor, I mean, I know this is really in the weeds, but I want to assure people this isn't going to look like a prison. It's gonna be the kind of, I mean, years ago, we went to see a park. Remember we went to see Cowards' property and you remember that was like Mableton or something? And they had a park on a real, like a state highway almost, and they had managed to make it safe, but still attractive. This is Vermac is not a state highway, but we know it can be done. At Georgetown, you've done it. So, okay. And then, um, I think what I heard was is a desire for number six that just clarifies. So first of all, there is a connection there. It looks like there's trees in our picture, but there's a connection. Our commitment was to improve. That connection. So you can get there through already and they want it. To stop motorized vehicles, golf carts, potentially whatever we're gonna do there. So if we think there should be a number six footnote on the plan, then we just need to say it. Which would be that public works is committed to within the next. Few years improving, it's really about improving the connection that's there, right? I mean, that's what the.
Like then public works within the next one to two years will improve the existing connection.
So before. I'm looking at what year and this is twenty-three. So, yeah, but by the end of. Twenty twenty-four, is that reasonable? Or no, twenty-five, or just in the next one to two years. Public Works will improve the connection between Village Mill and Heritage of Dunwoody neighborhood. Does that work?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then. What what we are, you know, we are a, we are a landlocked land city. And what we are doing with this park is focusing on an underserved part of our population, which is children and with the sensory garden. And potentially the equipment we put in the park, adults with special needs. And we have worked on this plan. What did you say the first hearing was? Twenty-one. So we are rapidly approaching two years worth of public input and public meetings. And, um, I appreciate, I'm thrilled that we're cert- saving the older of the two homes. Um, it's certainly the most historically significant. It's the most harming part of that property. And so, um, and so I look forward to what that piece, that house can be. I guess y'all have continued to reject my request to make it the bathrooms, but that's okay. Um, I look forward to seeing people using that house and rocking chairs on the porch eventually. So. All right, um. Any further discussion? So do we, we need to amend? The plan, I think. So what I said, does it have to become an official amendment? We lost our attorney. Um, I think we have to, somebody needs to make a motion with the number six added.
Do we, we move to approve, then we move to amend?
No, you can actually move to approve with the number six added.
I I moved to approve the, uh, Vermac Park Plan with the addition of a note number six. That within the next two years, the city of Dunwoody Public Works will improve the existing path between the Village Mill and Heritage at Dunwoody. Subdivisions.
Okay. Uh, move by Rob, second by John, or Joe maybe seconded too, but that's okay. All any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Joe, you can raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, one, so, uh, Jessica, Councilwoman Harris voted against it. And, um. Everyone else was for it. And Noel, before you leave, I want you to know that we talked about your water problem. At the retreat and I think we're gonna come up with a plan. So maybe that will help you plan better. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. And just so you know, there are rocking chairs already out on the porch for you whenever you.
Oh, I'm so glad. I'm coming to rock on the porch.
Thank you.
All right. We're still business.
Next item on the agenda is item number nine, contract to develop.
Next item on the agenda is item number nine, contract to develop a local road safety action plan. Michael Smith.
Good evening. Last month, the council, this was a discussion item for the council about developing a local road safety action plan. Since then, we have reviewed three proposals that we've received to help develop the action plan. And we're trying to put this in place this year so we can be eligible to apply for federal funding later this year as part of the Safe Streets for All program. As I said, we received three proposals. Tool Design was ranked as the highest on qualifications. You know, they recently did our seminar that we had at the Nature Center back in the fall. They've, they developed Atlanta, City of Atlanta's Vision Zero Plan. And they've also been successful securing about seventy-five million in funding over for seven, seven grant projects in this area of safe streets. So staff's recommendation is to award a contract in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars to Tool. And they would begin working on this. And as I said, try to get a plan in place this year.
Exciting stuff. Thank you. Any questions or comments or, John?
Okay, Catherine, go ahead. Happy to go. Looking through the document, Michael, can you tell us about the US DOT's transportation disadvantaged census tract? And how does that relate to the overlay on this effort? Are we only doing data collection in that one census tract? Or are we doing it through the, off the whole city? Is this for an entire city plan or is it for a plan for just that census tract?
It's for the whole city and entire city plan.
Okay. Is there anything special that we're doing in that, that census tract?
Or can you tell me what page you're looking at?
Task two point one.
Two point one.
I believe that's to meet the requirements for the federal grant applications and there might be certain grants available to certain census tracts. That's my understanding.
And since we were doing this for those grants, I just wondered, wanted to make sure I understood the ask and the analysis that we're having done.
Yeah, I mean, there's several, they included in their proposal several items that are specific to being in position to go for those federal funds.
Okay. All right. Citywide, that's my only question. Thank you so much.
Catherine.
Uh, thanks, Michael. I'm glad we're getting to this. This will be good for us. In terms of stakeholders, I just want to point out that it's rather than a school staff, I think PTA is the group that you want to talk to. You want to talk to the people with the most people on the ground. You know, not just community input, but they should be a stakeholder required meeting. All the schools around the Mandrags, wherever, because they're the, they're going to know the best. And I'm sure you'll include the biking community too.
Right.
Because it's the people who are mostly, most out there.
Yeah, with the schools in the past, we've worked with safer routes to school committees for the, you know, for the schools that still have an active program, but if not, PTA parents who can put us in touch with the right
Yeah, just, it's, it's just not staff.
Right, it's just not staff.
But it's, it's definitely not the best, your best source of information.
Yeah.
And can you elaborate on the dashboard that's going to be provided? The interactive, is that like public facing dashboard as part of their?
You know, that is a part of the proposal that caught my eye too. I don't have a lot of details on exactly what that would be. But, you know, well, we can ask those questions and get more information on that.
Okay, thank you.
And I know they bring, it says that they're kind of pull accident data. I'm assuming that, like, because we're so close to so many other municipalities, if it's an intersection like Jet Ferry, Dunwoodie Club, where it's kind of a shared jurisdiction, they're pulling the accident data from Sandy Springs too.
Yes, because the, most of what they'll be getting probably is from the state database, which will, you know, covers everybody. So yeah, it won't be hard to pull from adjoining jurisdictions.
Thank you. Uh, Joe, Joe, I'm sorry. It's not personal.
No, it's great. Hey, Michael, um, yeah, again, awesomeness because, yeah, they're just really focused on this. I think this is great. Focus on that tool design's got a great resume and track record and they've helped us and they've helped other cities. The community outreach area of that component. And I'm looking at the east side. I'm looking at the people that are not native English speaking people and may not show up to City Hall on a weeknight. I, I'd like to know what we're folk, how can we focus on attracting those people, whether we go to Coroner's Outreach and talk to the parents there? Are, what do we, what do we do in to focus on the people that are those underserved people that live over in that jurisdiction to target them for a community outreach?
Sure. One of the first things that we'll be doing is developing an engagement plan. So we'll talk through, through that with Tool and, and see what strategies they may have used in other places and, and include that as part of the, the engagement plan.
Great, thanks. I'd love to hear about that when it comes around. If we have something, if it's published in Spanish and, and whatnot and just walking over to the Walmart, even though that's over in Peshawar Corners, those people live in Dunwoodie and they're using the shared roads pathway. So, great. Again, I think, thank you so much for, for getting this through very quickly and getting Tool on board. Thank you.
I wanted to add to what Joe said a little bit, which is, is that we really need them to think outside the box for certain populations. So for example, just sitting here, if you happen to look out the window, there are lots of people, well, not so many right now, but there are definitely people walking back and forth, some for leisure and recreation and exercise, but an awful lot just to go to the store. And they, we have, we have used our traditional methods and tried to push information out to the various communities with not much success. So if it means setting up tables on the sidewalks, Walmart on a weeknight, something in the shopping centers, whatever it's going to take to reach the just, the parts of our community that we're not having great results because they are the people that are walking for their day-to-day task. You know, it's one thing for the people who walk for pleasure, run for pleasure and exercise, but it's a whole nother ballgame for the people who have to use their walking and cycling for transportation. So appreciate that. Excited about this process. Looking forward to see what the data teaches us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a business item.
Move, move to approve.
Move by Joe, second by Tom. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I see no one opposed. Jessica, that was unanimous. And so that concludes business items. And council, if you'll give me a moment of privilege, I think that's right, right? That was the end of business privileges. I'd like to introduce Caleb Mail. Caleb is here, I think. He was unable to attend the meeting at the beginning. He had a conflict. He is a member of our youth city council and also the valedictorian of the class of twenty twenty-three. And Caleb often won the contest that Jennifer put forth. If you ever spoke to the, their group, he was a frequent winner of the wonderful Dunwoodie branded prizes. And we'll ask you the question we ask everybody at dinner. How's that? And you can lean into the microphone and give us the answer. No pressure whatsoever, which is, is what did you learn by participating that surprised you about local government, Dunwoodie?
I mean, I think throughout the several meetings we had and also here tonight, it's just how much more detail some people put into the planning, like just into a park or like traffic implementation is so much more detailed and it's really great to see how they try to input everyone's voices. And it's great to know that, like, if we have effective city council, it can be so much more beneficial for the entire community.
Thank you. Should we take a picture with the valedictorian just so we can say we knew him when? I think we should. I think we should.
Okay. Yes. So about every five years or so, the, the city has, since inception, has hired a consultant to come in with a, a truck instrumented van, rate all the roads in the city as far as their pavement condition and use those ratings to optimize when the best time to pave roads is and come up with a, a five-year plan. And so we are, we're at the end of a five-year cycle now. We put out a request for qualifications. We received, actually probably the best response we've ever received as far as we had, I think, nine proposals. And we, we rated those and are recommending KCI Technologies to perform our pavement update in twenty twenty-three. And so our, we're, this is for discussion, but we're looking to approve a contract for one hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred and ten dollars.
Any back, Tom?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Michael. I was interested to see what comes out of this. I was reading through the, the statement of qualification. Sounds like technology on this subject has improved a bit in the last couple of years. So it'll be interesting to see if, if we see a notable, notable change in, in the recommendations that come out of it. I have one question that came directly out of the KCI Statement of Qualifications. They actually made a recommendation in there for us to transition our pavement management system to better integrate with City Works and C Click Fix. Is that something that we're looking at doing? Is that something that needs budgetary approval? Wha- what's the status of that?
Yes, that's one of the factors of why they rated higher is that they, they offered that. We currently are kind of managing things with Excel. And then before that, we used a different program, but this, this will streamline things and make it more efficient. Well, it'll be tied to City Works, as I said, and they have a, the software they're proposing. Also, we, I think we'll be able to set it up to kind of have a dashboard that the public can see as far as where our paving stands. So I, I think it'll be a big upgrade in the techno, the software side of how we're managing our program.
Is that something that's included in this proposal?
It is included.
Oh, great. Awesome. Thank you. That's all I have.
John?
Thank you, Michael. This is one of the many items that I am so very proud of that this city does. It takes all the politics in every way, shape or form out of our paving. Many, many years ago, prior to cityhood, we, when looking at how to pave our roads, we discovered that one road in Dunwoodie got paved way before others. And it was like, why did that happen? And we figured out, maybe we should not do it that way. Maybe it shouldn't be the elected officials who, who comment and find ways to get things done for friends and others and, you know, place. I think this is an awesome thing. We've done this. We were probably one of the first cities to do something like this. How many cities now of our neighbors do many of the other cities do the same now?
But most everybody I know of is doing. In fact, I think KCI, one of their projects was City of Shambley.
It's transparent, it's open, it's fair, it's equitable, and we're doing the worst first and we're doing the people's business. I love this and I'm ready to approve when appropriate with other council comment.
Catherine.
I also love it. So this is different technology than you used before, just super
The rating, the rating part of it where they ride the roads is, is basically the same. Course cameras have gotten better and things like that, but it's, it's basically the same principle in the rating. Where we're upgrading more is on the, the backend software side of managing the ratings and updating them and tying them to our maintenance software, which is City Works. So it's more on the, the data processing side where we're upgrading.
Okay, so this payment condition index is standard.
That's, that's the way we've been doing it.
So we should have seen from five years ago, our average should go up. We should be improving every time.
At least staying the same, if not going up. Yes, we aren't, we aren't going backwards.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, yeah, I'm ex, I'm excited to see it drive around. Okay, thank you.
I have a question and it's kind of hypothetical, I guess. And we've done this, this will be our third time or second, it would at least our third time, right, John? Fourth, fourth, okay, fourth time. So does it ever happen that a road you have, so where we are now, just so people know, is we've done about seventy-six percent of the road miles, right? Something like that.
That sounds about right.
Something about that. So is it possible that something in that seventy-six percent could score worse than something we haven't done? Like, I'll give you, yeah.
I guess it's possible. I mean, there, there are times when roads deteriorate at different rates.
Right.
So, and that's one of the reasons we do it every few years. I mean, if we relied on the ratings from five years ago to make decisions about next year, some roads may have gotten worse faster than others.
So what do we do? So this will start a new five-year plan?
Yes.
So people, so what we have out there in the remaining twenty-four percent is we have what we're doing this year, this in twenty-three. We haven't published what we're doing in twenty-four yet, right? Or have we?
That's right. And, and the reason why is when we used to do that, we used to
Right.
keep adding a year and then we would find we've got new ratings in. And the, what we publish based on the old ratings doesn't make as much sense now that we have new ratings. So we're, that's why we're waiting to get the ratings to put out a new five-year plan.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So is it everybody okay with consent? Oh, Joe, did you have any questions? Everybody okay with consent? Consent, okay. Thank you. I looked the last term in. All right, council, I owe you an apology because I didn't upload anything for reapportionment. But I will give you an overview and then we can put the documents when I have at the next meeting. But we actually don't have to vote on anything, correct, Ken? Yeah, because we're not, all right. So let me tell you where we are with reapportionment. Hold on one second. I have to find my notes. This is where we are. When we, every time there's a census and the data is released, every government, representative form of government in the United States has to look at the data and make sure that their districts are balanced. And so when we looked at our, and, and then in our case in Georgia, there was a big rush. The data came out, Jennifer, like twenty, late twenty twenty, I can't remember when the data came out for the twenty twenty census because of COVID, it was pretty delayed. So I think it came out at the end of twenty twenty. No, the end of tw, sometime in twenty-one, twenty-two, and then the, the legislatures, the people that do reapportionment for the legislature were all encompassed with getting that done before the twenty-two election. And so we waited for feedback because there was some contradictory advi, advice coming from the Capitol, from the people there about what the expectations were. So there is case law that says you can be up to ten percent different in your districts. I think that's the right number. And where we are is, is we're in a really interesting position here. We have District One, District Two and District Three, and District Two is almost exactly the right number. Like, exactly, right in the middle. District One is a little bit over and District Three is a little bit less, but the variance is about three percent. So we are way below the ten percent number. And the challenge we found, and I can show you various maps that we tried, we did work hard with Andy Summers, our GIS guy, just to see is, is that, because, so what, what we would have to do is move people out of District One into District Two and out of District Two into District Three. And there was, we couldn't get perfectly balanced. So we couldn't hit three districts similar. And so we could get a little closer, but not in a meaningful way, in my opinion, to disrupt what people know is their district. So we would be moving about six hundred people, essentially one apartment complex or two apartment complexes that are on the edge of the district. Because part of the guidance is, is not to move your current elected officials, if you can avoid it. And so some of that was a little complicated about where people live. I can, it didn't print very well, but you can see on this map like there's somebody's house and somebody's house. We have some weird situations where we have census, right, wait, right. We have some weird situations where we actually have a census tract within a census tract. So the one citizen that approached us about changing things would require us to move two thousand people because his census tract is inside because his census tract is inside another census tract. It's a little peculiar. So anyway, I'm recommending that we keep the same districts. With the caveat that with the growth happening in the perimeter center area primarily due to High Street that somewhere in the twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, which seems like a long way away, that this, that city council focus on what districts can look like moving forward. But for now, we're pretty well balanced. I'm pretty comfortable with it. We meet the law. Ken had it reviewed. And so I'll take any questions and not, you have nothing to look at. So we'll talk about it.
Can I just clarify one thing?
Yes.
Mayor.
Please.
So the numbers were seventeen, five, eighty-six, seventeen, five, oh, nine, sixteen, five, eighty-eight. The spread was below the margin between the highest and lowest of ten. It's actually point zero five seven nine. I think you said three percent.
One was, yeah.
It's the 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 spread, the constitutional test is the spread between the highest and the lowest, not from your ideal.
Okay.
And that was only point zero five seven nine, well within the ten margin. I want y'all to know, I think the record needs to say this for the public. So there's multiple tests and there's subcomponents of all the tests. I'm highlighting these, but I wanted you to know that Brian Tyson was engaged, who represents the state, access to the state reapportionment numbers, the whole kit and caboodle litigated this for numerous years, including back in the day when you had to get pre clearance from the Justice Department. So he knows what he's doing. He said, we're fine. He's had a conversation with Eric as well. So the population equality is a US constitutional backdrop. And that is the one where you've got to be the highest and the lowest can't be a difference of ten or more. Y'all are at well below that, obviously, point zero five seven nine, five, five. And if you round it, it's less than six still. The Voting Rights Act, you can't dilute minority voting strength. So they tested every district to see if there way in Dunwoody to maneuver a district, and there's not. So he says you passed it. And there's other components. I'm being, I'm being, you know, high school grade right now, but on the Voting Rights Act, y'all pass all the tests. We're telling you this, you don't need the legislature and Dunwoody to reapportion. Y'all can do it on your own. But we don't see a basis legally to require y'all to reapportion it. So I've told that to the mayor and mayor, I think that's the record.
Thank you for using all the big words. Go ahead, John.
So legally, we're in a good place for right now, but you mentioned in sixteen, seventeen, looking at it, would that be looking at it for the twenty census or is it?
Thirty census. So twenty-six, twenty-seven, right, right. That's, so it would be, it would be, so I would say in the next couple of years, we'll know what's happening at High Street. So we know High Street has six hundred apartments under construction. Some of those are one bedrooms. Some of those are two bedrooms. They're allowed a lot more as well as the senior apartments, which we've approved. So I think down the road the difference is going to be more than ten percent potentially, although we could have lots of redevelopment on the east side too. But just to start thinking about what that's going to look like, what are just, what we have to do, because like I said, one of the challenges we had is how to move people.
But legally, we won't need to be doing that until the next.
Right, until twenty thirty.
That's it. I just want to make sure I understand what our legalities are.
There's no legal need to worry about it till the census.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions? Thank you. There is some interesting litigation going on about at large seats, but we're not going to worry about those. And because we're not all at large, I think we're going to be okay. I think there's some councils that are all at large. And there have been some interesting legal stuff brewing about that.
Brian is involved in that litigation, so I feel very comfortable about his guidance to us.
Yes. All right. And then, so there's no action needed on that at the moment, and I'll upload stuff and put it back on for future. And then number twelve is the re adopting GMA's ethics, City of Ethics Resolution. It was in your packet. This is their recommended resolution. We are to serve others, not ourselves, use resources with efficiency and economy, treat all people fairly, use the power of our position for the well being of our constituents, create an environment of honesty, openness and integrity. And so you just have to do this every four years in GMA's system. So anybody have any questions or concerns about this? Consent, consent, thank you. Public comments? Eric?
No comments tonight, mayor. Great meeting. Thank you.
Okay, so before I go to council comments, I'd like to make a few comments. So today, Chief Chief Grogan, Deputy Chief Carlson and I attended the Zone Three Subcommittee, is it called a ad hoc committee about EMS services? And this year, unlike our previous attempt to address EMS, we were joined by representatives from the city of Brookhaven, the city of Shambly, the city of Doraville, the city of Avondale Estates, the city of Decatur. There may have been others, but those are the ones I saw. And I will tell you that between DeKalb and AMR, they have lots of great ideas to reduce I don't, what was the word we, misuse? Misuse of the nine one one system. It's going to require a lot of citizen education. And frankly, it's going to require a lot of staffing on their part. So the county is getting ready. They've been approved in their budget for to roll out seven vehicles that will be staffed with a nurse practitioner or physician's assistant and an EMT or a paramedic to 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 answer calls that may not require hospitalization, go to hospital. So so all their steps they're proposing in DeKalb are to reduce the use of the nine one one system or the use of EMTs by people for whom it's not medically necessary. That said, none of that is going to happen overnight. And so I a few months ago, I sent y'all an email that I sent to the CEO and to the, to our commissioner, who happens to be the Chair of the DeKalb County Commission, which was please spend more money. You used to spend it before the recession, before the downturn in real estate values, you used to spend more money and you took away all that money. And in case y'all don't know, they don't give ADR ARM, AMR, thank you, a penny. They don't give them a penny. And so and then was, and then some specific strategies on how to spend the money as well as what I think is critical is split the county into zones. So of the four largest metro Atlanta counties, Winnet still provides transport through their fire department. So every fire department has a vehicle and then they have probably have a private backup company or two. Fulton County is divided into five zones. There are parts of Fulton Counties are parts of five zones. Cobb County is divided into two, and we are the most dense county in the state of Georgia, and we are one. And so my recommendation was to split it in zones with a lot of restriction, restricted access, like it would have to be a disaster for one, you know, the same thing they do now. And I made the point that twice that I knew about, which means it's probably happened more, that Sandy Springs has had to come and perform a transport for us, including a pretty significant car crash where the, they had waited fifty-five minutes before an ambulance came. And Sandy Springs does it out of the goodness of the heart, even though of their heart, even though they're the same company, they are different contracts. And then and, you know, I gave a few other specifics. And Chief was there and did a presentation about our reality. The city manager of Brookhaven was speaking when I left because I had to go somewhere to another event, but I, Subcommittee, I hope, you know, DeKalb and AMR, they gave a huge, they spent a huge amount of time with everything they're going to do or that they're doing. But none of it's going to help immediately. And I made the point that as a council, our main responsibility is public safety. And that this system, I understand there are real challenges across the country. This is not just, it's no longer just a Dunwoody problem. It was never probably just a Dunwoody problem. But there are challenges across the whole country and but there are solutions that are not, we're not being allowed to try. And so I think next up, I'm not really sure because I left. So Chief, can you speak to what happens next in the process if they clear?
Yes, ma'am. So they have the next scheduled ad hoc committee meeting. They'll, the committee said they will assemble questions that the committee may have for us or DeKalb or any of the cities. And the next meeting will be here at City Hall in Dunwoody. And I think the date is, don't quote me on this exactly, but I think it's April the thirteenth at ten a.m.
And one of the members of this ad hoc committee, at least one was on the committee before. And so he specifically asked questions about the MOU and we were able, Chief was much more delicate than I. Chief was much more delicate than I. Chief said something and I said, well, you know, they were supposed to install GPS systems and the ambulance isn't Dunwoody and it never happened. Because they were asking us, he remembered that there were supposed to be three or four ambulances stationed here. And I said, well, we don't really know because they never put in the the GPS systems. And I was very gracious, just so you know, to Chief Fulham and to the people that are working every day. I'm really appreciative. They do good work. It's just that it's, and oh, and then I made the point that from the county's northernmost high school to its southern is a little over thirty miles, which is a big difference. And so the geography is not working. Again, they got it. They could split the county into zones and that might help. So I did that. Also, a few weeks ago, I met with the Georgia Department of Transportation team on the managed lanes. And there really wasn't a huge amount of new information, but I did, and we will invite them to a council meeting at some point. That they are going to, you know, try to get a, they call their builders on these massive projects developers, and they're still looking at a developer at risk model, which means the state doesn't put any money in and the developer collects the tolls. And and so we'll see. And we've stressed a few points. One was about the need to do something where we were, you know, on cotillion where we are waiting and waiting and waiting to put sidewalk where we know people need them. And at some point, we're, I said, we might just have to put the concrete down and y'all might have to tear it up and replace it. I think it was all new people, pretty much. Don't you think, Eric? It wasn't, Tim Matthews was away at a conference. So he's still the, like, overall project manager. Right now, the plan is still, you know, the developer can win the bid and then make changes. So we still don't quite know where anything is going to be. So it was mentioned because I said to them, you understand that this project is no good for my community. And because it's going to make surface street traffic worse, not just during construction. And they said, they looked at me with big eyes because that's not what they're selling. What they're selling is is that city should support this because it's going to make surface street better because it'll get people off your roads. And I said, no, because you're not fixing the Petri industrial. So people, if it's, if it's such a great project and people are going to want to use it, they are going to cut through Dunwoody to get to the first on-ramp. And when you're working on this, you should work on Petri industrial. And I think we need to push that hard. And I'll work with some of the top and mayors and everything else. But but I will have them come to a council meeting and then you can ask them yourself as well. So I think those are the two big updates I have for y'all. All right, anybody other have comments?
I just want to give a shout out to my neighbor Teresa Costa. She's a single woman here in Dunwoody. And last week she had the pleasure of introducing President Biden at a news conference. And I just love it when in the White House and you hear I'm Teresa and I'm from Dunwoody, Georgia.
She said she was from Dunwoody. The script said Atlanta and she changed it. So, thank you, Teresa. Right. Anybody else? Okay, do we have executive session? You said no. All right, any further business? Seeing none, I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor? Feel better, Joe?